All right, welcome to January 9th meeting of Murfreesboro City Council. We're here at the airport. This is our workshop agenda. If you will, if you'll bow with me and then we'll stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, thank you for this day, this chance that we get to come and do the work on behalf of the residents of Murfreesboro. Lord, we say a prayer for the weather that's coming in, that you protect those that are going to be working on our citizens' behalf. We pray for our street department. We pray for those that are going to be out on slick roads, that, Lord, you protect them. Pray for those residents that needs your help, Lord, that all the people that are going to be helping in these upcoming days, that you give them travel mercy, you give them safety, and most of all, that you give them compassion to deal with the situations that they're going to be dealing with. Lord, I lift up those people that have experienced loss in the last couple of weeks during this season and pray for their families. Pray for all of those employees who represent us every single day. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Erin, did we have any public comment?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move to action items. You have your city council minutes.
So moved.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Saberwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you have CIP reallocations. Any questions on those CIP reallocations? All right, seeing none, we'll move to item three.
Well, this is actually an item for approval. So this is where we've just identified excess proceeds from several projects that we just want to reallocate to other active CIP projects for parks, police, Town Creek, and airport. There's no overall impact to the CIP balances.
All right, so we do need a motion.
So moved.
Second, a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Saberwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, we'll move to CAD rehost dispatch servers IT. Matt.
Hello, Mayor and Council. The current hosting environment for our dispatch system has reached end of life and requires upgrades to support a newer version of the software. This purchase includes servers, network equipment, storage, licensing, and installation services. These upgrades will enhance system capabilities, ensure compliance with CGA standards, and maintain critical public safety operations for police and fire. The project will cost approximately $370,000 and will be funded through reallocated CIP funds. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Saberwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Thank you, Ms. Jarrett. All right, we'll move to taxiway A and Apron pavement rehabilitation. This is our final change order. Ryan.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Got a request for a motion to approve a final change order for our pavement rehab project. We're actually getting some money back in this time. We came in under budget. Engineers were tracking all the differences, so I just need approval to shrink the budget.
A change order to lower, absolutely, so moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Saberwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we're going to put a hold on item five right now. We'll do that at the next workshop. We'll move to item six. This is legacy recognition policy 1019. And Angela has been working on this for quite some time, so Angela, thank you for bringing this to us.
Morning. So the legacy recognition program is a new policy set to formally recognize and honor retired city employees for their contributions. The eligibility that's being proposed for you today, let me back up by saying that I wanted to bring this to you today just as for discussion, not looking for a vote today, just something to consider. We can bring back to you after you've had some time to digest it and provide any feedback that you have. The eligibility that we're looking at includes completing a minimum of 20 years service to the city, fully retired for two, having left in good standing, and you can be eligible either living or deceased. The nominations to be accepted in the fall for selection, the selection committee formed by the mayor and include city staff and retirees, and the committee will review those nominations, review the information, and then make those recommendations to you. The implementation is to be done through our human resources department for the ceremony and the awards. For the first year, we're looking at doing six people to be honored and then two for the following years. And these folks would get a plaque to keep, and then we would put together a display in the rotunda of City Hall to do kind of like a wall of fame for those city legacies. The policy is in your packet. Welcome, any questions or any feedback?
So the committee was going to be retirees. How do you select what retirees are going to be on that committee?
With the intention with that, and let me see if I can run back to that piece. So the selection committee formed by the mayor, there would be a representative from the human resources department, representative from city administration, and then potential retirees, the people, you know, we're looking to find folks that worked with these people and knew them and would have that direct and personal insight.
And Bill, I would like to add that formed by the mayor by recommendations from the city council.
I got you.
I don't think the mayor wants to handpick these people. I mean, I think it needs to come from the council, just like every other. The overall thought on this, and Angela has done a great job getting the thoughts scrambled of what we're really, we're trying to accomplish, and we talked to council members that, you know, over the years, going back to when we've had people who've passed away who worked for the city for a long time, and there's been discussions about naming city facilities and sports facilities, and it really brings up this uncomfortable conversation about an employee who worked for the city, who did get compensated for the city for all those years, and then saying, well, we're going to name something after this one employee, and then it brings up, well, what about this person? And so we were trying to find some way to be able to recognize those with the city who've been there for a long time, and really do this in two ways. One, and this is not necessarily in what Angela has presented, but one would be at City Hall, for example, for what I would say administrative and leadership positions that, you know, in City Hall, that people, when they come in, and I'm using this as an example of, you know, someone like Chief Christman, for example, who was here for 30-plus years, or David Baxter, or people that were here with the city. But then, the other thing that really thought about, well, what about other people who were rock stars in their departments? And so what we talked about was that each department would then have the ability to nominate, you know, people, I forget what the gentleman that was at the golf course that was with maintenance for 30-plus years that retired.
Joel.
Not Joel, there was another, he had an Italian name, anyway, I can't remember his. But like, the gentleman that spent a stars for many years that works at our street department or solid waste that we talked about, he keeps his truck, it's, I think James, is that right?
I'm not sure.
Okay. But then, people within the department could nominate their employees that would be, for example, maybe in the street department in their conference room, they would have their own wall of fame. So it would give the ability where the departments were involved, and then the council could make recommendations for long-term employees that served, you know, city managers. I can go through and think of the list of, Sherry Carpenter is a great example of someone that was here for over 30 years, that we've got all of these people that we have not recognized. So this is a good way to do it, at the same time, not get into having discussions of naming buildings and ball fields and all those type of things.
Is there a number each year?
Six for the first year and then two each additional year.
I think that's good, because first year, there's probably more people to pick up and then have two each year. That makes sense.
Yes, sir.
Can you go back on the criteria? The one word, you know, is continuous. And so, let's just say you've got a person, they start out with the city, they're here for 10 years, and they take a job with the county. Doesn't work out, they come back and they spend another 10 or 15 years. So they've got 25 combined years, but it's not continuous. Was there any consideration to continuous or combined?
I think in looking at that question and in a lot of exceptions, our human resources, Mr. Wilkerson back here has helped put this together as well. City Schools started doing a Hall of Fame piece. I think when you start looking at exceptions, you know, it's something that council has the authority to do that, of course. From a policy piece, when you start with the exception, it kind of can bring that down several different paths. So, you know, to the question of when you start considering a variety of exceptions and what-ifs, certainly something that the policy can guide and direct and ultimately city council can choose to honor.
We may need to look at, I mean, I can go through and think of people, you know, Cumbie Gaines just came to mind. I mean, I can go through and think of way more than six people that we have not recognized. And so that may be something that we may have to look at the first two or three years. It may have to be six the first year, six the second year, and then start slowing it down. But there's, never having done this, I would hate for us to start getting into picking who deserves it more than the other. So there's going to be some other discussions, just to see if we're headed in the right direction.
What does "fully retired" mean?
A lot of times when people retire, they still have sick and vacation and various circumstances where they're partially retired. So the intention of this was to begin that two-year clock when they're actually leaving city service. Certainly some flexibility, though, if you guys would rather set it from the time that you have cake in the rotunda, you know, there is some flexibility there. But the idea of just having that point marked.
The picture that you saw right at the first had a picture and looked like some kind of narrative on the plaque.
It did.
Is that what, are you intending to do something like that, some kind of narrative as to what their involvement was?
Yes, sir, if you would like.
Okay. And that's in City Hall, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And as the mayor mentioned, it does not, this policy is intended for that council ever recognition of retiree. There are departmental recognitions. If you go now to the police headquarters, for example, you will see different recognitions there, same with fire. Water Resources does an employee of the month and has plaques there. There are a lot of different places where there is still a level of recognition going on in other ways. This one is intended to specifically zone in for those city retirees that council chooses to recognize for that significant contribution to the city's success.
And maybe, I don't know why that word "full" is resonating with me like it is. Maybe we just toss out a year, at least a year. I mean, sometimes when we retire, we are older, some of us, and may not live for two years. I mean, you know, who knows when we're going to leave, but I'm saying maybe we can cut that back to a year so they at least know they're being honored. But that's something we can think about, and we can possibly keep the two years, I don't know.
Certainly be glad to look into it. And then also, you know, whenever we bring this back to you, between now and then, welcome any feedback, additional information, anything else that you would like to see.
Is the committee that's going to do the review, they're going to receive the nominations?
Yes.
Is that a public thing? Because I'm just concerned that we hurt feelings if somebody gets nominated and then doesn't get recognized, you know, I just...
As long as we don't put elected officials on there, then it would not be...
Public knowledge.
Where, I mean, I agree with you. I wouldn't want to be sitting on the table where you're debating who's more worthy than the other person. So I think that would be, as long as there would only be one elected official on there and the rest would be appointed, then it would not be public, correct?
That's correct, yes.
That was the goal.
Any documents that were produced as a result of that meeting would be public records, but it would not be, it would not violate the public meetings law, the open meetings law, to have that, it wouldn't have to be open to the public.
And it's not that we're trying to hide anything, but that was a huge concern to start talking about, you know, who's...
Who's more worthy.
Yeah.
And let me add, the nomination process itself can be public. We can and will advertise that we're now accepting nominations, but then, of course, be respectful with what those nominations are, I think could be key.
You did a great job.
Thank you. Welcome, any additional feedback between now and when I want to bring it back to you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item, and then, Council, if you have any questions between now and then, Angela's the expert on it, and she can definitely help you with anything. So, all right, let's move to the sponsorship ordinance. Mr. Tyndall.
Good morning, almost afternoon. Let's see if I can. I don't have a lot of practice on this end here. There we go. All right. What we thought we'd do is give council a little bit of update on the Sports Authority's work so far, and talk about an ordinance that's being proposed that will really set parameters that will help the Sports Authority as it goes through its process. We've worked with Adam and his staff to have an ordinance that'll be proposed in the future, coming up, probably pretty quick. So just to take a look at that real quick, the advertising, the type of advertising sponsorships that the Sports Authority will look at would be restricted to commercial speech. Inconsistent with our existing ordinances require a permit or an agreement, so we'll have sponsorship agreements that will fill that. And Parks and Regulations requirements and regulations will have to be complied with. The things that are prohibited in advertising would be alcohol, tobacco, drugs. The priority would be on protection of minors, recognizing how the facilities are used, and these are family facilities, and we want to make sure that the advertising and sponsorship stays in that, consistent with that type of use. And then Parks and Rec would have additional impositions that they may make on the types of advertising, where they would go, what they would look like, just to make sure that they don't conflict with the activity that's going on at the facility. The purpose of this whole exercise is to raise revenue, to help supplement the cost of running the facilities and the capital expenses in the future that the facilities require, so the funds will go directly into the Parks and Rec's budget and work through on an annual basis. Non-commercial speeches, because these are public facilities, they are open forums, so non-commercial speech could still be permitted, but it would go through the regular process that's existed for quite some time, so that's not a change. I think, not too long ago, I can't remember if it was last month or the month before, Paul Latour talked about the process that the authority went through to select a consultant for marketing purposes. They selected Donegal and Associates. The engagement period in their contract will be for two years, and they will assist in various aspects and have a lot of participation back and forth with the Sports Authority. But they'll develop a marketing strategy and identify potential sponsors, do the coordination and planning for bringing those sponsors in, and a financial analysis that's required to determine that we're in the market for what we're looking for. The compensation, they'll have a fixed fee to help offset some of the expenses that they will absorb, and commission structure based on revenue that's brought in. So, any questions? Happy to answer those. But that's the process so far. The anticipation is agreement will actually start first of this year, and Mike Humes with Donegal Associates, he's ready to go.
Back for that one slide on their fee. So how does their fee, is that, that's not tax dollars, that's what you guys have raised through events or sponsors?
Well, yes, until the revenue flows in, there's a budget. So council's allocated an amount to the Sports Authority, so the Sports Authority has a budget, so that'll be paid, and then that'll be offset with revenues as it comes in, once the sponsorship's...
As the revenues come in.
Right, right. And then, of course, the commissions are all based on revenues directly as they come in. If there's no other questions, I'd ask maybe, real quick, a favor, so I don't have to come back, perhaps, and jump to other business just real quick, if you're okay with the mayor, although he's not listening, so that's okay. I'll do it anyway, though.
I'm laughing.
He's laughing at his own joke, it's embarrassing.
It's a dad joke.
Good audience. If we could jump to the community investment real quick, just a quick update. If you remember, the assets for the trust is determined on December 31st. That's a process, because not all the investments are market investments, so it takes a little bit to value the assets, and our financial consultant's doing that right now. But preliminarily, with very preliminary numbers, it looks like the amounts will increase, both to the city and the charitable contributions by between 20 and 25 percent. So, pretty good increase on what the trust is able to do this year. So, any questions on that? Happy to ask, answer those as well.
Craig, so if we had, using this as an example, but the 123 acres that we have out on Highway 96, and that we wanted, say that we wanted to put a request proposal out for the private sector to see if someone would be interested in a private-public partnership to build baseball fields, a hockey facility, or something like that, would that need to go through the Sports Authority, or would that be through the city council to do that P3?
It could be either. It's not required to go through the Sports Authority. Sports Authorities, from a statutory standpoint, are built to do those kind of things, so it could certainly go through the Sports Authority and then come back to council, because the agreements would have to be with the, at some point with the city, depending on what the agreements are. But from a budgetary standpoint, it's probably going to need to have at least council approval somewhere along the lines, but the Sports Authority could be the entity that the council uses to put that together and get it out and get the responses back and do the vetting and things like that, if they chose to do it. But it's not required.
I mean, the city council, I suspect that when we get the bid back for West Park next week, you know, the likelihood of us saying that we're going to take on another project that large would not be very successful based upon, I assume, what that number's going to come back at. But something that, I had a discussion with a guy this morning that talked about having a group that would be interested in possibly building fields for private use, but allowing the city to have an agreement where the city could use the fields, for example, Monday through Friday from 2:00 till dark. But they would build the facility, and they would be responsible for running the facility. We would just get the benefit of using the facility because we had the land. But that may be something that we just see what's out there, like what some of these other municipalities have done. I mean, you know, as an example, Smyrna built Cedar, is it Cedarstone? They built four fields on Rocky Fort Road, and those four fields were in excess of eight or nine million dollars, not including the land, for four fields, for turf fields. You know, so we're showing eight, which means that that number could be as high as 20 to 30 million to... high as 20 to 30 million to develop a project, and if we had somebody on the private sector, Erin's over there shaking her head like, we can't afford that. But if we had a, someone on the private side that could put a request for proposal out to partner with someone, we've already got the land, then maybe someone would want to come and build baseball fields, softball fields, and even a hockey facility that the private sector would, would run. I, I think it's something we at least need to see if the ability's out there that someone would want to, want to do that.
Yeah, there's a potential, and certainly, the Sports Authority could be a tool to, to gather that information and put it together.
Something to think about.
Does that fit under the Donegal and Associates, uh, contract to, for us to help them to help us explore that, or do we have to have another consultant?
I, I would say this, it's, it is, it wouldn't be within the scope of this contract. Having worked with and know, knowing Mike Humes, the principal, uh, for Donegal and Associates, he'd have some pretty good input. So, you know, I'd certainly probably call and ask him questions and.
It wouldn't prevent, though, if they were up to that task, to enter into a separate agreement that's more, more defined and delineated for that specific scope.
Yeah, certainly wouldn't prevent that.
What you're seeing nationwide, the future of athletics is partnering with private companies to try to run some of these. I mean, we, we've not built baseball and softball fields since the mid-'90s. We've actually taken away, we've taken away Samsonite and Oakland's, um, and not really, we've replenished two fields with Miracle Field and the small, the small field at Miracle Field, but those are very specific uses that you can only use those for. It's a discussion we need to have this year to try to figure where, where we are, because, I mean, I, I think saying that we're behind with athletic fields is, it's not even funny how far, how far behind we are on building, building fields, but if we had a group that would be willing to build those, that we could use on a limited basis, and then they could use those for economic benefit, then it would be a win-win for us. All right, thank you, Craig. All right, we've got economic development reporting update.
Mayor, that's, that's me. Thank you for the opportunity to present this. If I can get this up on the screen. Always love it when technology works. So this is just an update from our council retreat. If you all recall, uh, there was a couple of action items as takeaways from our council retreat that, um, you all wanted to see kind of a more balanced approach between staff, Chamber Commerce, and potentially some economic development consultants. And again, the Chamber Commerce may be providing some more accountability for their economic development activities. So, uh, one of the action items was to document current ongoing monthly meetings between the Chamber and Murfreesboro staff, and provide you periodic reporting, and then also to review potential consultants with expertise in this area, make general, general solicitations for qualifications with potential interviews. Well, it's kind of, uh, evolved slightly. What I, what I am kind of proposing at this point is what I've seen over the past six, seven months, uh, as city manager. City staff definitely has a, a, a very large part in, in economic development from the standpoint of, um, creating, you know, being that key point of contact, uh, for developing prospects, and also using the Placer AI, ESR demographics, and we have very good local data as far as traffic and different elements, uh, when, when there's site-specific inquiries coming, you know, to, to our front door. The Chamber does a great job, I think, of developing more quarterly-type report metrics. We do need them to start telling us more about their tracking on solicit, solicitations and our request for information activity. And finally, as a consultant, in lieu of a consultant, we were, we've really kind of looked at, uh, the Greater, Greater Nashville Regional Council, talked with Michael Skipper. They have a, uh, a regional economic development plan, a comprehensive economic development plan, and I've talked with them about, they, they actually are doing Plan Rutherford for the county, and they have expertise in actually creating those economic development strategic plans for municipalities. And since we're already kind of a partner with them, it seemed like, you know, they would be a good fit to try to pull a lot of our local, uh, uh, reports together and, and integrate those. So, again, this is just kind of the Placer AI, it, you know, with this, this, for example, on the Gateway South Medical Center Parkway Track, uh, we've got traffic data, time of travel information, you can kind of see household income, uh, from a 30 or 45-minute drive. Again, it's got a lot of demographic data, uh, that's something that staff can easily pull together. Sam, Sam Huddleston does, does a really good job at that. This is just something kind of, uh, that, actually Craig sent, sent me back, I think, or sent us back in June or July. It has to do with Placer AI and, and talking about upper mid-scale hotel chains are leading the recovery in the hospitality sector, thought this was interesting, and may dovetail in with a few things that we're, we've got going on downtown, but you can see that around, uh, 30, 31 percent of the, uh, uh, mid-scale hotel are gaining that, gain that, that, uh, market share. Chamber Commerce, again, they do, uh, they can look at historic and projected trends, industry standards, business characteristics, workforce characteristics, uh, and some in-demand skills. They did put, pull some information together for us, for us to review, kind of the job trend, growth, uh, it basically saying that, uh, that we're outperforming, uh, the state and, uh, national, uh, uh, growth in, in employment. We grew about 8.7, uh, percent in 2018 to 2023, and we're looking at about 11.4 percent between 2023 and 2028. Industry characteristics, you can kind of see where Murfreesboro ranks compared to, those little gray lines are the national averages, so you can see where we're above and below the national average, uh, industry, top-growing industries. And again, I, this is in your packet, so if you want more, I'm kind of go, going through this fairly quickly, but you can, can see this in your agenda packet. It actually, uh, for Murfreesboro, they're showing the last 12 months' worth of advertisements for job positions, and you can kind of see the top companies that have been advertising. Of course, Murfreesboro, uh, is in there, uh, towards the, 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 I think this is the top 20. We're, we're, looks like we're around 17, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, 15, uh, 14 or 15. Uh, again, workforce characteristics, largest occupations, uh, how we compare to our national average, in-demand skills. And one of the things that is in your packet as well, there's about 210, we came across this, and it's economic, economic development indicators and measures, and you can, they're, they're classified by the various subjects here. I just tried to condense them and give you kind of an example of what, of what one of those indicators would be, but there's, uh, I actually had lunch with, uh, Paul Latour and, and Patrick Cammick yesterday, we kind of went over the spreadsheet, that's also an exhibit in your attachment, trying to highlight who is best to go capture some, mine the data, if you will, and bring that into a quarterly report, and what metrics do we want to start measuring for you all to see, and you all need to have input on that. So I think in a future date, we were going to sit down, and if we can look at maybe the ease upon which we can get that data, and then maybe present those to you, and if you find them valuable, again, we're trying to ultimately create kind of a quarterly report that shows you, uh, economic development activity. I framed it this way, uh, to, to my wife, and she's always a good sounding board, but it's like, well, economic development, development's like fishing, right? And a lot of times you see the, everybody wants to see the fish, you know, where's the fish at? But there's a lot of casting, there's a lot of rods in the, in the water, there's a lot of, of baiting the hook, there's a lot of reeling in, there's a lot of activity that may not always culminate in a fish, but there's a lot of fishing going on. And that's what we want to show you, that there's actual value to, to what, uh, these partners are doing for us. With GNRC, this was kind of, again, part of your, your retreat packet, we're talking about the, uh, uh, economic development update from Murfreesboro 2035, the Destination Rutherford 5.0, Main Street Strategic Plan, uh, MTSU's Strategic Plan, and talking with Dr. McPhee, that is going to be finalized this spring. So I, I approached GNRC, I said, would you guys be able to, uh, pull all of these different, uh, plans together and integrate them as an update to Murfreesboro's economic development strategy? And Michael Skipper did say that they would be able to do that. I'm sure there will be a fee on top of our normal, uh, uh, membership fees, or sponsorship fees, or whatever we're paying to do this, but it's somebody we know, it's somebody that's tied to a multi-regional, um, a multi-county region, uh, that, that is, again, they are required, uh, to create a comprehensive economic development strategy, uh, by federal law, so I thought that would, they would be a good candidate to kind of act as that consultant arm for the city in developing that strategy, and of course, they know what our neighbors and peers are doing, so they're already integrated with them. This is kind of the area that, that the GNRC covers, um, as far as, uh, you know, that, that comprehensive economic development strategic plan. And they do have the adopted strategy, that's on, online, there are some guiding principles, strategic goals, proposed actions, SWOT analysis, those kind of things, uh, the economic and market, marketing trends, market trends for, for our region, so I thought they would, again, it would, it would be good for them if they're willing to take on that task to kind of help guide us in developing our economic development strategy. So, that's really it. I know that was kind of fast, but just wanted to give you an update that, that we are, uh, moving forward in this regard, and do want to start, uh, providing you that, that ongoing, uh, routine reporting and economic development activity. So, hoping for questions if you have any, just for information.
Who is the accountability partner for the actions? It says 48 proposed actions. I just wondered, who, who do they report to, or?
They have a, I think they have a, they have a board, they have a board, I mean, uh, Mayor, you may know more about the greater, the GNRC structure, governing, governance structure than I do, uh, but they do, they have to have to pass a, a resolution or, uh, for this plan, and so they're, they have monthly, quarterly meetings with all of the, the, uh.
It's mainly made up of, um, re, mid, middle Tennessee region mayors, county and city mayors. Or, for example, in my case, for transportation, Jim Kerr is the representative, we've always had, Dana Richardson was representative for transportation, um, like Mary Esther is on, uh, Reed is on their executive board, so it, it's mainly all local, local mayors and, and administrators.
So, as we go, again, this, uh, I've, I've said this to several folks, when you're initiating a, a reporting structure or a strategy initially, it may seem a little clunky at first, or it may seem a little, uh, frayed around the edges, but as, as we do this on an ongoing basin, uh, basis, it will, uh, refine, we will, we will refine it, refine it, refine it, and it'll get a little bit more, uh, you'll be more familiar with it and comfortable with it. And, uh, again, it's really just to show you that we've got folks with, uh, their eyes on the proper balls that are out there, and, uh, have an activity, uh, you know, working hard.
Good work. Thanks, Darren.
All right, any questions? All right, let's move to CIP transfers. Any questions on the CIP transfers? All right, let's move to fiscal year '25 mid-year budget review.
So I don't have a formal presentation, since that report follows our same format as our previous years, but I did want to point out, sales tax revenues are coming in strong, uh, state and local combined are about 900,000 over budget so far for the year, and at 4% over last year. While shopping's continuing, we're showing a 20% drop compared to last year for building revenues, so those are cyclical, we'll see how that shapes up in the next six months, see if interest rates and inflation have any, um, impacts on the economy and how, uh, that might affect new building, uh, for the rest of the year. And then, like I mentioned last month, payroll slippage is continuing to drop, we're seeing better recruitment and retention, especially in our public safety, but citywide as well. So through December, we're looking at 2% in slippage, that is noted in your report. That's the lowest we've recognized, uh, since I started monitoring this several years ago. I know that Darren had, I think, 2.5% on his, uh, spreadsheet that we reviewed at the council retreat, as far as our assumptions go, so he's looking at kind of tweaking that based on where we think it's going to fall out for the rest of the year. And that's something, you know, I'm, I'm looking at very closely each month, that's part of your monthly dashboard, but your monthly dashboard's two months behind, but when I'm sitting in that, that out, I'm going ahead and looking at the next month to see how, how things are looking, to see if there's anything that we need to be alerted on. And if we need to, we'll come back with a budget amendment. Overall vacancies are about 5%, but since we budgeted so much more of our slippage to cover those raises this year, that's why you see that variance. And then, uh, Craig just sho-, uh, shared that the MCIT balance is coming in a bit higher, so that's great news for next year's budget. So our transfer in from the, um, um, trust for FR25 was based on 123124, or 23 balances, so the 123124 balance will affect next year's budget. So hopefully that'll equal 400,000 to 600,000, well, depending on where expenses fall out, we'll, I'll be, that was very good news, Craig, thank you. I'll be looking at that closely as soon as we get those numbers in. But if there are any questions about the report, you know, I'm happy to answer those. If there's any more information you want to see that wasn't presented in there, that, that report just really looks at a snapshot of where we're at in November and December with revenues, with, um, not just our taxes, and not just the things that you see in the monthly dashboard, but also departmental revenues and departmental expenses as well.
All right, any questions? All right, let's move to the dashboard. Any questions on the dashboard?
For me.
All right, uh, we have no boarding commission appointments. Any licensing, or?
No, sir.
All right, any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
Any other business from our staff members?
The, uh, the pending potential, uh, storm event, or snow event that's coming onboard, I know we've been working very hard, uh, prepping for that, and people have their plans in place for, um, we don't like using the word non-essential and essential employees, but employees that we're going to, are going to have to report in as part of that, that storm. As far as the, the folks that, um, are not required in any type of response to, um, roads or, or other types of public safety, uh, role, what we have put forward is that we do plan on being open tomorrow morning. People have the opportunity to take, take time off if their supervisor allows, if people do come in, in, tomorrow, and, uh, inclement weather is, is apparent and hazardous road conditions occur, we will be letting folks, uh, take off early. Again, they would be take, but they will be taking personal time and vacation time, uh, as part of that time off. We can always reevaluate, we have these extended, I know in the past, we've had extended periods, multiple days of, basically, the roads were just not passable, it's happened to us the past couple of years. We're trying to put down a, a guideline for that, uh, event, if it should happen again, but as far as right now, the, the plan is to have City Hall open, uh, Parks and Rec, uh, facilities will be open, and if people desire to, to take off based on their concern of, of travel, they're, uh, they should be working with their supervisor to request that time off. So just wanted to put that out there.
Let's look at in the future, and I understand what you're saying, but let's say, the, I'm at work, the weather gets real bad, where there's no way I can stay until 4:30, because, you know, it'd be more dangerous. If my supervisor approves me going on and going home, right now, our, uh, rule is, you have to. to take your personal time, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to see us look at in the future, if an employee comes to work and this situation happens, that we continue to pay that employee, and if you don't come to work, that's different. They come through, I just want us to just look at it, because I'm coming to work with the intentions of staying, but human nature, which is out of our control, doesn't allow me to stay, and I, I would like to see us pay the employees that actually come in and leave early.
And I'd be, be happy to look at that, Ms. Gales-Harris. The only thing I would comment on is that we do have employees that don't have that opportunity. They're going to have to come in at, say, the water plants, the, the Water Resource Recovery Facility, those are 24/7, 365 operations, and they have to come in no matter what, police fire, our streets, our public work folks, they come in. So if we afford someone time off as, as, without asking them to take personal time, then we will, to be fair, in my opinion, we would need to compensate those that are in, that are required to come to work as some type of floating comp time or floating day. So if, if we take it, if we, if we give it to one, I think we have to give it to the other group that's, yeah, let's just look at it, sure.
It'd be feasible to do that, but.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're, and that's, that's, we're, we'll, we'll, we'll come back with some, some guidelines on that.
Could we look at a report on our census update on that?
Yeah, Sam, do you want to? I, I got shot down the other day because I, we're not having a great response. Sam's working on everything. We've, I just said, hey, if we get $175 per resident, maybe we should, you know, like, pay people to sign up, and that was not a good recommendation. Like, hey, we're coming to the positive, but anyway.
We continue, our team continues to work hard. We sent out mailers, 75,000 residential addresses just before Christmas. We're continuing to get those in, several hundred per day. And in addition to that, people are also using that letter as a reminder to, to sign up online. So there's two ways we're, we're getting information back from the mailers, they're going on to our website, entering the message or information electronically, or they're returning a posted paid envelope with their information in it. Currently, we stand at about 10,000 responses, households responding, and that's about 25,000. So we've got a gap to go to get to our target of 172,000. We continue to work with our partners. Some of you may have noticed some ads perhaps on Comcast or in the local theaters, and then we're continuing to work social media. And we have some special activities planned in January and February for community outreaches. Since this Sunday, we're working with some local churches to have them focus that day, and then, then we also plan a census Saturday where we'll work with our team and, and some of those same churches to canvass some neighborhoods that are low reporting.
My other idea of a tax break for signing up got shot down too, so clearly I'm not good at this.
They're going to stop inviting you to meetings.
It continues until.
And maybe we can come up with a little catchy jingle. We can put on our cable TV that runs like a commercial, but, you know, nice little beat to it and catchy.
Are you volunteering to sing?
We're on a script for that. We do have, we do have three or four spots that are running in a lot of locations, social media and on our, our regular feed of City 3 that, that, they do have that message, one from the mayor, one before Christmas from Santa Claus, and, and some other from city staff that are out there. And we continue to run those, but certainly welcome to any ideas. We're, our, our goal is to have our count by, completed by the end of February to be able to turn those over to GNRC to, to audit.
I was just thinking, if we could periodically have something to pop on people's cell phone, have you turned in your census form? You know, like election time that comes on phones, you know, vote for, I've used that before. Maybe we can put that as far as your census, like periodically ding on people's phones.
We have, going through this process, one thing, you know, the, the marketing and advertising changes so much quicker than what we, as a government, handle things. I really think maybe next time, or even in the next month, Sam's, you know, they've done, our team's done a great job, but our, our reach is only so far, and we may need to really look at hiring a professional.
A marketing firm.
Marketing firm that, that's what they do. You know, get the message out, get social media, get robo-calls.
Launch a real campaign, yeah.
And that may be something that we really need to look at over the next 45 days, that if we see that our, our, our count is not progressing, we may, we may need in February to authorize Darren and his team just an amount to, to meet with some of these social media people to really, you know, I always joke that they call him the muscle guy that was, is with.
Big John.
Yeah, Big John, that, I mean, he's always promoting what?
We have him under contract. We do, we've already got a, a contract with him.
Is the end of February an arbitrary date, self-inflicted, or is it a?
Statutory.
Statutory, oh my goodness.
So we, we really, let's maybe see how this next week or two goes, and we may need to come up with a game plan for the month of January to really look at.
You do a text phone blitz for about 10,000.
Yeah, I mean, and that's something, Sam, we talked about, that it's not like we can't get voter records from Allen Farley, that people who we know vote that live inside the city, that they may have, those are easy reaching, reaching things, but that, that's something over the next couple, couple, two, three weeks, really need to, to look at.
And we do continue to mine those sources of data with our utility providers and city schools and some others, where we have some amount of information on folks who, who live inside the city and, and have not yet responded. And then we, we continue to work social media pretty hard. We've, we've funded some of those, Ms. Gales-Harris, we've funded some of those ads that were geographically targeted, and we'll do some more of that in the next, in the near term.
Thanks for your hard work, Sam.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other business from council?
One comment, we've got some of our retired park voters over in the back, Lee and John, Tony. I met with, with Lee and John, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, and so, you know, we, we've had a lot of talk over the last years about cost of living for retirees and have talked with Aaron, all of us have over the years, and the cost of living adjustments inside a plan that is closed is, it's really, really difficult. But we've talked about coming up with an overall plan that would be presented to us at budget, that would be a five-year plan that we would vote on as a council one time, and then the next council could look at what that is in the next five years. And so Aaron's pulling all that data together on current retirees, current spouses that are, are drawing current amounts and getting sort of what an, an average is on what is being, being paid out. So she's working on that plan along with Darren, that they can start giving us information that by the time budget comes around, because we're already in budget season almost, that we can have those discussions during budget and also have the information to us. So that was the, what I talked to John and Lee about, that we could at least start getting the data and come up with a plan that would be part of our overall budget as opposed to hiring actuaries and going through a, a plan adjustment that would be not only super burdensome, but extremely expensive on changing anything in a, a closed plan. So more information to come for everybody to, to look at and, and make a decision about.
Is, is that just for fire and rescue, or is it?
No, it'd be for all employees.
Yeah.
Police, fire and rescue, and all employees. Yeah, I mean, John and Lee are started the conversation, or it's been going, but this would be for, for anyone. I think there's 400 and some odd people that are in that plan right now that are truly retired, 53 spouses, and then 200 and some odd that are in the plan but are no longer with, with the city, but are vested in the plan.
They are not yet receiving benefits, but are not with the city, yes.
700 people that would be, be part of that. Aaron's great at pulling that data together for us to be able to at least have that discussion and be able to figure out what we can, what makes sense. Does that sound fair, Aaron?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll provide y'all some good information on what those average pension payments are for our current retiree base and what, you know, what sort of cost it would be on an annual basis to fund that out of the general fund versus out of the pension plan, which is what I think you're stating, so that we're not impacting that closed plan, but we're still giving the retirees the benefits, the increase in benefits for a set period of time.
Makes sense. All right, any other questions? Prepare for snowmageddon tomorrow, we'll be adjourned.